I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School, District 153 for Monday, November 16th, 2020. Tonight's meeting is on Zoom and is being video recorded. The in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the pandemic, and physical presence for the meeting is unfeasible. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bosch?
President.
Mrs. Bethay?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Here.
Mrs. Havighorst?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
All present.
Seven present. Given the Open Meetings Act flexibility afforded by the Governor, by the Governor's emergency proclamation, we have a quorum present with seven members. And I just want to mention that Mr. Bosch is somewhere on the road, on the way, bringing his son home from college. So he is with us, but we may not... Oh, there he is. He's got his seatbelt on. So I just wanted to point that out, that if you can't see him very well, that's why. All right, we have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Education of October 13th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have future dates.
We just have a few things on there because of, we had the end of trimester on Friday, and of course, we have our Thanksgiving break coming up. So, and then after that, December 3rd and 4th will be our parent-teacher conferences. So this week, we have school through Wednesday and early dismissal, and then following week, we get to have some parent-teacher conference opportunity for our parents to connect with our teachers. So.
Great.
Corrections to any of the dates?
Okay, thank you. The first item on our agenda, and I know something that everybody is very interested in hearing, is a presentation on our 2021 Return to In-Person Learning Plan. Before I turn this over to Dr. Mitchell, I want to say a few things that are very important for all of us to hear. The last pandemic was 100 years ago. I have not found any records that are useful on what schools did then that would have anything to do with what we should or ought to be doing. We are figuring this out, as you know, as best we can as we move through it. Along with figuring out a roadmap, it is my earnest hope that whatever we figure out, nobody will have to use for more than 100 years. And that by then, maybe it'll be irrelevant, and there'll be some new method of getting through something like this. As you all know, we have been planning for this school year for a long time. And when we chose in August to do an all-remote plan at really the 11th hour due to restrictions put on us by the state, we all took a deep breath and wanted to make sure that that plan would be something solid and that something that would really impact our children. We have been collaborating with our staff, with our union. We have been listening, and we have worked through many plans and looked at many ideas throughout districts in the state and across the country. The plan that you saw on Friday was a plan that was created with the staff, with their input, and quite frankly, with their blessing. This was the plan that the staff felt was the best for our district. We have received many communications from you in the form of emails and notes to us through our portal. And I want you to know we're listening to you. We have read every single email and every single comment. We have spent much of the weekend and today thinking through your comments and thinking through our plan. And based on the responses to the survey, and so far, the responses that we've received and the input that we received from you, we believe we have a viable alternative that will keep students together with their teachers to the greatest extent possible. I want to repeat that. We believe we have a plan that will keep students and teachers together to the greatest extent possible. There are pluses and minuses to this plan that we're going to be sharing with you. It is not a perfect solution, but there are no perfect solutions. And we are determined to find the best solution for our entire community. Many people are very content and very satisfied with having their children remain in the remote program. But others need their children to be in the building when it is safe to do so. Regarding the timing of what you received on Friday, you said from the beginning that we would have something to you on November 20th. We need to plan so that if the opportunity to get our students back in the building happens, we're ready. It's kind of like if you're, you've got a senior in high school. They're writing their college essays and filling out those applications, even though they don't know if they're going to be able to go to college in the fall. We have a responsibility to be ready with a plan that will work. Overwhelmingly, your comments told us that you approve of the job we're doing, and you trust our teachers and our administrators. So I'm asking you to maintain that trust. They've earned it. We will not be reading your letters tonight because frankly, we would probably be here till midnight, and we feel like you want to hear what we've got cooking now. But rest assured, we have read every single letter. And I want you to know that we really appreciate your trust. And we especially appreciate those comments that were made in the spirit of civility. Lastly, I hope that you'll listen tonight because there's a lot of good information for you to hear. And together, we are going to get to the best solution for our school district. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Shelley. I really have to follow that? Okay, I'm used to doing that. That's fine. That was always amazing. Hopefully, everyone can see my presentation that we're going to go through tonight. Going to ask the principals to participate with us a little bit as we go through this, and also with Dr. McAllister at the end. But I want to start with a little bit of background. You know, eight months ago, our lives changed. Governor Pritzker on March 13th ordered all schools closed due to our pandemic, and we shifted to remote learning. We thought it might only be for a couple of weeks, but schools remained closed under the Governor's order for the remainder of the year. And then in June, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Department of Public Health released joint guidance for schools to attempt to open, to start the school year. We formed district task force teams. Staff across the district worked extremely hard to create a plan, a hybrid plan, and a 100% remote plan. Unfortunately, on August 12th, the Illinois Department of Public Health released new guidance that was much more stringent than prior guidance. It required some additional PPE and some other items that most school districts did not have, and most school districts therefore needed to start remote to start the school year. Those that didn't decided not to follow those guidelines and put their school district in risk of liability and other concerns. We also then in September, listened to leading scientists across the country. And they were stating that the fall could be bad. We could have a resurgence. We listened to those scientists and decided to stay remote through December 18th, but at the same time, start a facilitated distance learning academy for certain students that needed extra support. And I guess hindsight right now, I would say, boy, were we right? Because we are in a massive surge. Move forward into this fall, on October 26th, I had an opportunity to send all the families in 153 an email explaining our current discussions that we were having with our building leadership teams, the Homeland Education Association Administrative Council, and other teams across the district of what are we going to do when we come back after winter break? I included on that October 26th communication, a survey explaining that we were trying to gauge where the families were at at this time. Would they be interested in coming back to an in-person, or would they prefer to stay remote? Or did they need to see what the plan looked like? The results were helpful because it demonstrated that we had approximately 35 to 50% of families that were interested in coming back to an in-person regardless of what the plan might look like. In that communication, I also stated that right prior to Thanksgiving, we'd be sending out our plan. And that's what I did on November 20th. So that kind of takes us to tonight. And we know the past eight months, our teachers, our assistants, our administrators, our nurses, our custodial staff, our tech department, our district office staff, our food service, everyone involved with 153, including all of our families, parents, guardians, students, have done an amazing job with our remote program. And throughout the process, we've continued to involve staff as much as possible. And one of the teams that we formed a couple of weeks ago was a district transition team. We were able to take the information from all the building leadership teams and other input that we received from staff to meet one evening and review many different plans. And you can see this team was a broad spectrum across the district. Myself, Dr. Gibson, our chief school business official, Shelley Peck for Communications, and Mary Kay Dunn, our human resource specialist, helped the teams out if they had specific questions. But each school had the team members listed there as part of that evening meeting to review the input that we received from the various teams. It was a challenging task. We have a mission that we want to fulfill. And I was very proud of the work of that team that evening as we put our plans together. Some reasons why we needed to develop a new plan. We know that in September, the Board of Education approved our current plan through December 18th. We knew that we'd have these discussions at this time to know what is our next step into the second semester. We also know that in-person learning benefits student educational outcomes, and we want to be able to provide that if possible. This also continues to be strongly encouraged by the Illinois State Board of Education, the Governor's Office, health departments, and to provide some form of in-person instruction. Also, our facilitated distance learning academy has been successful. And again, as I mentioned before from the survey, approximately 40 to 50% of our families demonstrated an interest in in-person back on October 26th. So based on that input that we received, the various teams and parents, we set a goal to develop a plan that includes two pathways for learning, an in-person model and a full remote for our students to begin as soon as it is safe to do so. We set a target date for January 21st, 2021, knowing that we'd want to take a two-week break after the holidays to quarantine. And that was a discussion I had with the staff to allow travel and to do all the things you'd want to do over the holidays, but we'd start with remote learning until at least January 21st. We also discussed what the model might look like in some criteria. And a few of those are listed there. Obviously, we want to keep students and staff safe in accordance with the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education health guidelines. We want to try to provide consistency for families like we have been throughout the first semester. We want to continue with our high-quality instructional practices. But we also have to provide some things that is manageable, not only for administrators, but our teachers and our parents and our students, regardless of what option they would choose. And in the worst-case scenario, if we are able to come back, we have to be able to transition back to a full-remote scenario for all students. And you've seen this happening across the South suburbs and across other counties where schools have been back for a few weeks, and now they're back fully remote. Some activities that we asked our building leadership teams, our administrative council, and our district transition team to do. I've asked them to identify common interests. Why is this so important to do for our students? We reviewed various models. I probably looked at between 10 and 20 different models across various South Cook, various districts across the South Cook region, throughout DuPage County, Will County, and anywhere else I could get my hands on something that maybe would make sense for us. We established certain criteria that we needed to meet to make sure our safety protocols were in place, and our teachers felt comfortable with the plan that we would present. We discussed the pros and cons of each model. We reached consensus at the end of the day, and we developed the timeline we felt was feasible for our teams and for our parents. Some of the criteria that was established by the teams. These are the things that we wanted to be tied on. In 153 for the last 20 years, I've talked about things being tight and loose. Tight are things that we are basically non-negotiable. These are things we believe in. And the teams created this list of, and I'm sure it's not exhaustive, but there's several that I wanted to go over that the staff felt strongly about. Our number-one priority is student and staff safety. We also felt that to reduce risk, that no food would be consumed on-site, especially a lunch. And this is something that's changed since August, and it's really dealing with the science. I think the scientists have demonstrated that this is a much more airborne virus, and our staff would have concerns if students were taking off their masks for any extended period of time to have their lunch. So that was one of the criterias. We also wanted to reduce population to help maintain social distance to the greatest extent possible. We also wanted to make sure we meet the Illinois State Board of Education instructional guidelines that have been given to us, and also a focus on our core 153 essential learning standards. Our grade levels in schools can have different models to meet the unique needs, and that's one of the fortunate things we have as grade centers, that each school is unique, and each school can meet their kids' needs in a different way. The synchronous and asynchronous types of instruction that are occurring might need to be different across the different subject areas, or by different days, or by grade levels. And the other criteria that we discussed with the staff is they felt that streaming live into the classroom is very challenging. In my conversations with many, many other school districts, a couple of them have families and students zoom into the classroom while the teacher is teaching in-person kids. So you can imagine if you were a third-grade teacher and you have 15 kids in your classroom that you're teaching, while simultaneously, 10 other students are zooming into the classroom. For us, instructurally, that did not make sense, even though a few districts are doing it that way. It was just something that criteria was not something our staff felt comfortable doing. So based on all the research, we took a look at four different models. And if you can kind of think of the criteria that I just mentioned, that our building leadership teams, administration, and district transition team took a look at the common models that are out there. I'm sure there's some variation to these. But in all of our review of districts, and I'm part of a weekly call on Monday mornings with 66 other school districts, about half of them were in-person a couple of weeks ago. Now it's down to a handful. We're running one of these four models, which was a split AM/PM hybrid model, an AB blended model, which was similar to what we were probably looking at back in August, and then an extended half-day model, and a full day, full-in-person, all students come. After reviewing our various criteria and pros and cons and all those type of things with the staff, it was decided that the AM/PM hybrid model fit the majority of our criteria. Of course, there are some challenges with it that Mrs. Marks already acknowledged. And the biggest one that we struggled with, and we knew this was going to eventually happen back in September. We knew if we ever could come back, a child's teacher may need to change. And that is never something we'd want to do. But there there is no model that we were able to look at that doesn't have that happen. Most districts that we review that had kids come back in the last few weeks also had to have teacher changes. But as Mrs. Marks said, we're discussing ways to alleviate that due to the numbers that we're seeing on the survey thus far. We also know another big challenge for us was childcare and changing family schedules again. And this is why we wanted to make sure that that only happens one more time if we were able to do it. This would happen in our second semester. Of course, our administrative and other staff members' scheduling is a huge task, along with our transportation department, families' schedules, and all those things are going to take time to figure out. We also have to reassign staff to be either hybrid or remote teachers. Or if we look at a new model where a teacher is teaching in the AM in-person and then PM for their remote kids, it might alleviate some of the issues of teacher change, and that teacher can stay with their same kids and kind of be a combo hybrid and remote teacher. If we went with traditional AM/PM, where you bring in half the kids in the morning and the other half in the afternoon, as we have been discussing, there are some additional transportation costs added to midday routes. We have less flexibility for teachers. That's a con to support students that are quarantined because they're busy working with kids in person. And of course, some courses, as they are now, specials, PE classes, might need to be taught remotely, more than likely, and maybe synchronously or asynchronously. But there's also some strengths. We feel that we could have the kids on-site for at least two and a half hours per day for direct in-person instruction. Another criteria that I put here, which was a strength, is our teachers wanted to see the kids every day. The thing they did not like about the AB model, as we continued to review it, is that they would not see the kids every day. They would see them every other day. And they wanted to see them in-person for at least two and a half hours per day. It also would help us to keep our class sizes small. We already discussed that having half the kids and then splitting them again would really reduce our building capacity, which would go back to that safety piece to keep the number of kids in the building and the classroom small to help with social distancing. We also think we can provide transportation, and this is just for this second semester. We normally don't transport kids that live within a mile and a half. However, we're going to do this for a very reasonable cost and can provide transportation for any family that needs it, so we can take care of them, and that we do not want that as a hindrance to come to school or to get home safely. We've also been collaborating with the Park District for childcare needs. We know that very few parents looked into this back in August, but we're hoping that with our new plan, maybe more parents might take advantage of it, be part of the Park District. We can use our transportation. And if a parent needs to be at work full-time, we can be with the Park District. They can provide support, and they can be part of our in-person program. We're going to focus on content, our core content by grade-level teachers. That's a real strength of this. We also need to understand that remote instruction and for specials and other extension activities might be on the opposite end of their day. The other strength that was, again, that I mentioned from our staff, is that no food would be consumed on-site, so the kids would need to be wearing their mask for the entire time. And then also, a bonus to this model is that lunch can be distributed at the end of the onsite learning time. So families do not have to come up, as they do now, and pick up lunches. We're assuming we're still serving over 250 lunches a day. Any student that would like a lunch can take it home with them after their onsite learning time. The kids that come in the AM would take it home with them at the end of their morning session, have that for lunch. The kids in the afternoon would take it home and have it for the next day. I think that will be a real plus for families and students that are in-person. We'd still be providing lunches to other remote students that would like to stop by the sports complex to pick them up now as we do. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Lawson for the next couple of slides to talk specifically about some of the discussion she's had with her teams about what might work at Willow School.
Thanks, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'm going to start with early childhood and pre-K, which are our three, four, and some children who have turned five. Currently, or in a normal year, we would have such a session in the morning and a session in the afternoon. We knew that we still needed to offer a remote option. So what we've done is break those times down into a shorter timeframe. Instead of two and a half hours, we went down to one and a half hours so that we could have the groups coming in be extremely small. These are, a lot of these students have never been in school. They're struggling with watching Zoom and not understanding that those are classmates, that this is part of a community, that this is part of a learning environment. To them, we're all just faces on a screen. So this would really enable us to get, like he said, our hands on kids, to spend that time with them and to really get them acclimated to Willow and to the community. For early childhood, those are our students that have IEPs. We'll offer three sessions. We only have one teacher who teaches early childhood. So she would do two of her sessions in-person, and then she would do one remote so that we're accommodating all of those students. And then in pre-K, we're able to offer remote and in-person, all three of those time slots. The specialists would be outside of that time, so that during that hour and a half, they are with us, and they're getting their storytime, their circle time, their centers, and all of their basics. We're also going to look to group them a little bit more by age, which normally we don't do during the year, so that our kids that are getting ready to go to kindergarten can really focus on those pre-kindergarten learning skills. That's about it for EC pre-K.
Thank you.
Okay. Here's our big group. As Dr. Mitchell mentioned, every building has a building leadership team. And the team at Willow consists of 12 people. They represent all the grade levels, the specialist, special education, the assistants. And this group is kind of our brain trust and decision-making group. And they were charged with, how can we get kids back? What can that look like? And they, as Dr. Mitchell mentioned, we looked at models from all different schools. When you're an educator, you have ties everywhere, and you have family that are teachers. So we pulled in all of their different models and looked at those and said, what would work for us and what can we not do? And then each grade level. So pre-K, kindergarten, first, second, our specialists and our interventionists all came back with a plan on a template they were given. And all of them felt that a morning and an afternoon session would be the best thing for Willow. It's always very reassuring when you do something like that, when everybody's in agreement. So what we're looking at is two and a half hours in the morning and two and a half hours in the afternoon. The time during which a child would be in-person with us, our focus is on all of those priority skills, all of the hearts of education, your English language arts, your math, your writing. They would still do their morning meetings, so we're working on building that community. So we're working on building that community and building those communication relationships with each other, the SEL. On the off time, the time that they would be at home, they would have their science and social studies, which would tie into whatever they did in the morning. They would have their specials. Right now, we think we can do almost all of those live. They'll have their homework, some interventions for our kids that are in tier-two, tier-three, and our kids that need enrichment. And they'll also have some time on some specific apps that we use that help us track reading progress and math progress. And then it's just flip-flapped for the next time of the day. We've also used that same format or that same schedule with our full remote learning children. Nor, right now, they're going eight to one-thirty, and they have specials embedded into that time, and they have lunch embedded into that time. And if we take those out, we can kind of keep them in the same format. And the reason that works for us and is important for us is that we would like those specials to be live and we would like those interventions to be live to the greatest extent possible. So we've aligned that schedule with the in-person and out-of-school schedule. Do I talk about FDLA now and what we've learned from it, or is that later?
Feel free. Yeah, while you got the floor, go ahead.
Well, if I have the floor, we could be here for a while. The FDLA group was the group of kids that we've had in school for the last six weeks. And as often is the case with kids, I think we as adults learned as much as some of the students. It was a great, if you want to call it like a trial run for us, to see how this would work getting students back in the building. We learned a lot about seating and where that needed to be. We knew six feet apart, but what are the different configurations for that? We learned a lot about the time it takes to transition, to certify kids, to get them in, to walk down a hallway, to get set up, to be ready on your Zoom to interact with your teacher. We also learned that even though there's two years difference between kindergarten and second grade, there was a world of difference in the success of the program. Our first graders were on it, our second graders were on it, and our kindergarten was a much smaller group, but needed a lot more of our assistance. We knew they would, but we hadn't quite anticipated exactly how much. The thing that we did notice, though, is that kids that hadn't been engaged, kids that we were missing at home, whose attendance was down, when they came in and they were with us, all of that improved. Grades improved, engagement improved, and more so, so did their confidence and so did their pride in their abilities as students. So it was a really good foray into bringing kids back in the building for us and for our staff.
Thanks, Melissa. Next, I'm going to ask Mrs. Snord to pop on and, and talk a little bit about Churchill. Many of you may not even have met Sarah yet. She's new principal at Churchill School this year. And unfortunately, we've been remote for the most part. So, but I'm sure you Churchill parents have seen her on some of her great morning announcements and so forth. So Sarah, you want to discuss a little bit about Churchill's structure and schedules?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, everybody. We spent a lot of time in our BLT, our planning team, just talking about our why. And Dr. Mitchell has kind of hit on some of those. But I wanted to just highlight some of the things we kept coming back to. Number one was that our students and families deserve the absolute best. And we, we felt like one of the reasons why we're pushing when it's safe to do so to bring students back is students are going to learn best while they're in-person. And, and Ms. Lawson just talked about what she saw in students coming back to campus. We saw the same thing with our FDLA students at Churchill. We certainly want to make sure that we are keeping health and safety, social, emotional learning and connection at the center, as well as keeping an eye on having a high-quality instructional program while also having something that's manageable and sustainable so that our staff, our students, our families, that we can all do this together and get through it all with great results. So those are the things that were at the center of our conversations. Our BLT met, we included members from our FDLA staff team as well as key staff members, our office staff, our nurse, so that we could have a lot of different perspectives as we discussed the different models. We also brought that, the district planning work took place. And then we followed up with our BLT again, once we've kind of fine-tuned the model, which you see on the slide here. I wanted to talk about, first, our AM PM model. We, we talked about the strengths, the challenges of many, many, many different models. As was mentioned before, the BL team together. And at the end of our discussions, we landed on the AM PM model for, for many of the reasons that have already been discussed. But first, for our in-person students in the AM PM model, we wanted to focus on our social, emotional learning, our reading, language arts, and our math so that in-person students are getting that direct instruction in those areas. On the flip side, while they're remote learning, there would be asynchronous opportunities in science, social studies, PE, health, specials, and then independent practice in the areas of math and ELA as well. And so that, that would be AM, and then the flip side of that, the, the PM, it would, it would, it would be reversed. So one of the, the strengths of that model, of this particular model, the AM PM, we saw opportunities where we could embed a layer of support for our students that may have attended our FDLA program, that need the most support, our special education students, those needing intervention in academics and social, emotional learning, and our EL students. If we use an AM PM model, we have the ability to leverage our human resources and our energy to provide the support to some of our students who need it most, which is, which is really great. So that's why you see some of that asynchronous learning taking place on the flip side of the AM PM. And then our fully remote program, we're going to, we're going to keep all of those things that are working really well in our remote program currently. But you'll notice we'll do at the very top there, the eight-thirty to eleven will be that direct instruction in those key areas again, math, ELA, social, emotional learning. And on the flip side, we have that same asynchronous structure that is similar to what we currently have. But I do believe that this will allow us to, it, it gives us flexibility. It allows us to leverage what's already working to maintain a really excellent program and to build on it. So all of that comes together. Those were some of the, the highlights from our discussion from our BLT. And we do realize that there certainly are challenges with, with any model that we would go with. But at the end of the day, we felt this one was going to best serve our families and, and work for our staff and our students best as well.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll turn it over to Ms. Johnson for James Hart. And again, Kim is a new building principal at James Hart. Oh, it's great, uh, great to maybe hear from Kim tonight.
Thank you all for being here. I want to just talk about the plan for James Hart. We, just as the principals discuss, we had a lot of discussions at James Hart just about what model would be best to, in terms of bringing students back into the buildings. And, and I'm going to tell you, we struggled because it truly is a numbers game for us because our students will be changing classes. One of the thing that I'm going to tell you has been a gift and a curse is just all of the variety in terms of classes that we offer. You know, when we're looking at other models, we're, we're from other schools. We're not seated. It offers many things. So the foreign language and the others and the special classes. So we, we really struggled with, you know, that we dealt with is, and cup sizes for us when we bring the students in-person. And so we chose the AM PM model for James Hart. Again, we looked at kind of the extended day, but like Dr. Mitchell said, just in terms of not having to serve lunch and things like that. So our focus in that morning, with that morning group, would just be on some of those core classes continuing with SEL and those social, emotional skills with our students, then a transition, and then looking at some of the PE specials, BCL interventions in the afternoon. And then just a kind of a flip, flip side for the, kind of a flip side for doing that PM schedule. So again, when the students are in-person with us, just kind of focusing on that core content, those core classes, and then the specials, BCL interventions, having it live as much as possible in those afternoons in that flipped schedule. And then, again, looking at a numbers game for us and then figuring out how that fully remote schedule will have some of that live and asynchronous instruction that we could currently have in our model. So our model truly is a numbers game because, again, our students will be moving throughout the building and changing classes. And so for James Hart, the, right now, that AM PM model is the best one, especially if we're looking at bringing forty to sixty percent of our students back in the building.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your, your discussion about James Hart. Wanted to kind of finish up with our last slide is just our tentative timeline that we've been discussing. So as we know, our family responses are due by December fourth. We want to be able to provide opportunities to continue to hear input, make adjustments in our plan as necessary, have families reach out to us, reach out to their building principals and teachers to discuss what might be the best learning option for their child. So we wanted to give ample time for that over a couple of week period. Mrs. Marx is going to be calling a special board meeting to consider this plan on December seventh for the, for the board to consider the plan and, and make a final determination on what the plan looks like and to take the vote. We, we plan on notifying the families no later than January seventh, based on the metrics that we're using of whether we can get started on the twenty-first. In a little bit, Dr. McAlister is going to talk a little bit about some of the metrics that we're, that we'd be using during the course of, during the month of December and early January to make that determination if it's safe for us to bring back students and staff. Our plan right now, as I mentioned earlier in presentation, that the staff, we hope to report back to the building no later than January nineteenth, after the two-week quarantining and working remotely. There would be no scheduled changes for any students until we actually can be assured that we can run a hybrid program and a full remote program simultaneously. As long as we stay remote, we're not changing any students' schedules. Implementation, again, is our twenty-first of January is our target date. Again, only if conditions are safe and we meet the established metrics. If not, we set the next dates of February sixteenth and March eighth. March eighth is the start of the third trimester. So that is really the kind of the drop dead last date that we would even consider bringing students in. If we still have to be remote by March eighth because the metrics are still not good and we're trending in the wrong way, too many cases and et cetera, hospitalization rates and all those things are too high, then we'll just have no choice except to remain remote, remote instruction for the remainder of the year. However, if that happens, even beginning early in, you know, February, we would be going back to looking at small groups of kids in our FDLA program that we had before, that we had great success with. And we'd consider continuing to bring those kids back that need us most. So look for at least one or two communications from me either later this week or early next week as we look at any adjustments to our plan and tweak this to make sure we're addressing, you know, any questions and comments that you might have. I want to end with just a, a few of the notes that I sent to staff on Sunday morning. I sent them a video message. And I, and it was really for my one-fifty-three staff family. But when I reread it today, it's really for our entire Homewood family. The virus is causing a tremendous amount of hardship for so many. People have lost loved ones. We've lost jobs and livelihoods. And we've seen our healthcare system and healthcare professionals be overwhelmed and exhausted. However, I think there is hope. We've all probably enjoy listening to Dr. Fauci, at least I do. I think he's brilliant, and my wife's a healthcare professional, and she agrees. So he said the other day that the Calvary is coming. And I assume what he means by the Calvary is maybe a vaccine, some hope there. The efficacy seems great. But he also said, don't put your weapons down. You better keep fighting because they're not here yet. So we have to keep fighting. We have to keep wearing masks. We have to keep social distancing. We have to continue washing our hands. We have to keep doing the things to keep our students, staff, and families safe. But even with that glimmer of hope, we know we're a long ways away from living life and running our schools the way we were used to. Unfortunately, COVID- nineteen continues to surge and be relentless. It may continue for weeks or months. Nobody knows. So we're making plans now for two pathways for learning, but we'll only implement those if it is safe to do so. We have to have detailed plans ready now, as Mrs. Marx mentioned, for when the situation improves, which we hope is sooner than later, we have some form of in-person educational programming. As you heard the principals attest, the kids that were in for FDLA program were failing. They weren't connecting. They were not participating. We helped them, and we need them back in our schools. It's possible that we would need to stay remote for the entire year and maybe even start the next year the same way. I hope not. And I know out of the hundred-and-twenty-seven people that are on this call tonight, nobody wants to hear that. But we still don't know everything about this virus. We're still waiting for the science to catch up. But I take comfort in knowing that our staff, our one-fifty-three staff, our three-hundred-and-forty-seven employees in one-fifty-three have done an absolutely amazing job with our remote program. I truly believe we're, we're the envy of the South suburbs for our remote program. And if we have to continue it for the remainder of the year, it's going to be okay. But I also firmly believe that if conditions improve dramatically at this point, that we should have a plan that we can implement, understanding the strengths and challenges that we face with any plan we have. We have worked very hard to gather input from various staff members, listening to your comments and concerns through various surveys and emails, even way back in August and July. And as we enter Thanksgiving week, I truly wish all of you good health and happiness. Stay safe. There is hope, and we are in this journey together. To kind of conclude our presentation, Dr. McAlister and I, as Mrs. Marx said, we have been reading all the emails and comments and questions. We received twenty-nine comments and questions tonight via the board link. And we will review those very carefully tonight and tomorrow and make sure that we're reaching out and updating our FAQs on anything that we think would be beneficial for our parents to know before they make this very important decision for their child. So Dr. McAlister, I'm not sure if you could share your screen? If you like to do that, just go over a few FAQs for, for anybody that's on the call.
Sure. Good evening, everybody, and, and thank you again for, Mrs. Marx, for your comments, Dr. Mitchell, and all of our principals. And most importantly, I appreciate all of you who are taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us tonight. The, the amount of feedback that we received when our survey went out speaks to how much you care about the education of your children. And I just want to assure everyone that all of us, all the administrators who are on this call, we share your passion. It's our life's work, and we want to make sure we do it as well as possible. And that obviously means serving you as well as we can. So we take to heart the feedback that we received. And I just want to show you, you can all see the, the district website that I have opened up for you. What I'm about to share are the questions that we received and the ones that we received more than one time. So we wanted to make sure to address this so that everyone in our community could see those responses. And I want to show you where on the website you can find this information because I will cover it fairly quickly, just as an overview. But if you want to refer to it again, you can come to our main webpage, which is right here in the upper right-hand corner. You can see where it says, "Take Me to Remote Learning Central." I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. And then you will see our remote learning website. And right here, in the middle of the page, it says, in the middle of the page, it says return to school plan and F A Qs. So if I click that link, that will take you to the plan on the right, but then the F A Qs are right in the middle of the screen. And these again are the ones that several of you had asked about, and I'm sure others that didn't email us have the same question. So I just want to briefly touch on these. Uh, why did we end up with, uh, the A M P M model versus the full day plan? Well, I think you've heard from our principals, uh, and, and obviously Dr. Mitchell and Ms. Marx as to why we arrived at that plan. But again, if you want to read more, uh, details, uh, you can click on that link and then expanded answer will appear for you. Second question, why do we only have until December fourth? It was really done with the idea that's, that we've talked about tonight. It takes time to plan for a change of this magnitude. So December fourth is really to allow our administrative team as much time to get ready for a January twenty-first return to school, uh, plan. Knowing full well, of course, that right now the numbers are very high, and I'll talk in a moment about the metrics and what will dictate whether or not we ultimately decide to come back on January twenty-first. Uh, one of the, the common questions, of course, is why will my child's teacher possibly change? Um, and I want, I want you to think for a moment, all the, uh, shifting that we need to do, because we're really running two parallel schools simultaneously, one for remote students and one for in-person students. And that necessitates having staff members to, to work in both of those parallel systems. Some districts have, have taken the, um, the plan that they're going to have an outside service provider, a contractor, for example, provide the remote learning experience for kids. And, and that certainly works for some, we didn't feel it was best for us, so we want to use our own teachers because we know that they are fabulous. Uh, but obviously to do so requires some movement. And when you move staff around, you obviously, uh, look at possibly having to move some students. That said, as Ms. Marx talked about to start tonight, we're going to do everything we can to minimize that. And so we're already putting our thinking caps back on to see, is there a way that we can minimize that movement as much as possible? Uh, the next question talks about the metrics. A lot of you have asked, well, what specifically are you looking at? So I am going to expand this so you can see the responses. And there's, there's no great epiphanies here. If you watch the news at all, you hear a lot about positivity rates. And the Illinois Department of Public Health, I D P H, has provided guidance for schools in terms of what they call adaptive pause. So right now, a lot of districts have gone back to remote, who were in person. Well, they are following adaptive pause guidelines. And one of the things that adaptive pause calls for, uh, is the seven-day positivity rate. So the question that, that I'm addressing here specifically, why would we stay in remote instruction? We're currently in remote instruction, we're talking about bringing kids back in January. But what would cause us to remain in remote if the seven-day positivity rate was above five percent? So that's one thing that you can look at. Right now, I just looked before the meeting, uh, we're at about twelve percent. I mean, that rate is far above what we want to see. And certainly if rates are where they are right now, we would not be returning in January. Uh, another case, weekly, weekly county rates, that's Cook County, of course, of more than fifty per one hundred. Uh, right now, that number is in the hundreds, to give you an idea of the spike that's taking place. A weekly county, uh, case for new cases each week above ten percent, that's another metric. And then finally, one that you don't see publicized because it varies by district is how many of our students and staff have been quarantined? We have had positive cases and we're putting together a dashboard that we will be sharing with our public. So you can go to our website, once it is up and we will publish the, the data, uh, that have impacted our students and our staff. But most of our quarantines have occurred because of close contacts. So I was in close proximity with somebody, for example, who tested positive and therefore I have to quarantine. Well, if that happens enough times, uh, imagine trying to staff a district when you have several teachers or whole classes of kids who are quarantined. And there are certainly examples of districts that have been, uh, you know, had to go back to full remote because of, um, large numbers of quarantines. So those are, are four metrics that we will use when making this decision. As far as a timeline, um, so, so now let's say that we've gone back and we are in person, let's hypothetically say January twenty-first, we're in person. So this question speaks to, well, what if things get bad again? What, what would cause us to go back to remote? And so that's back to that positivity rate above eight percent, which is a number you've probably seen in the news several times. So basically, to go to in-person, we need to see that number below five percent amongst other factors. And then if it gets really bad again, once we're back, if it's above eight percent, that would cause us to go to remote. In terms of the timelines, and Dr. Mitchell talked about this a moment ago, but we basically are going to give you two weeks notice as to what we are going to do. So right now, we are targeting January twenty-first as our return to in-person instruction. But as this says, we will notify our community, our staff, no later than January seventh. So we'll give you two weeks notice based on the data. We want you to be able to provide, obviously childcare if necessary, and so we need to give you advanced notice. So all of the other dates that Dr. Mitchell mentioned, February sixteenth and March eighth specifically, same thing, we'll give you two weeks notice. If we haven't opened by January twenty-first, we'll now start looking at February sixteenth and we'll let you know by February second. And then if we haven't opened then, the last, uh, checkpoint is March eighth and we will let you know two weeks prior, which is February twenty-second. And then, last but not least, um, in terms of students who are quarantined, if a student gets put into quarantine, how do they still get, uh, how do they still get their materials? So, uh, we have a couple of options that we will leave up to the family. One would be to have that student join our remote program, uh, for the ten days, fourteen calendar days, ten school days that they're out. Or we can send work home as if they were, um, an absent student. And then, um, the last question I believe that I, uh, that I omitted here, um, in terms of why are we not allowed, you know, to change our mind? Why are we saying that the decision is a fixed decision? And the reason for that is, is again, the amount of planning that needs to go into this. Uh, once we have a set number of kids, Ms. Johnson at James Hart talked about the numbers. So that is going to dictate our staff levels. And if we have, uh, for example, fifty percent of our kids in the remote program and fifty percent in person, then we are going to staff accordingly. If, if people are changing their minds, that makes it very difficult for us to get our staff members in the right places. That's why we are asking, uh, for a commitment by December fourth. So I hope I have addressed, um, a lot of the questions that came up. I know these were the ones that we received, but as always, don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, we are easy to find by email or telephone call. Happy to have a conversation or, or respond by email if you do have other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McAllister.
Welcome.
I wanted to mention just a couple of things very quickly, because we have a hundred and twenty-four or so guests on the call that there could be a parent who chose an option, um, in the last twenty-four hours. And maybe they heard something tonight that wants them to change their mind on their option. You know, this is open until December fourth for someone to decide what they want to do. So if you decide you, you know, I really liked what the principal said, I want to be in person and I chose remote, then feel, feel free to contact them and, and we can get that changed, um, for you. So, and also, you know, as we look at tweaking this plan over the next few days, and Mrs. Marx is going to finish up, uh, talking about some of the discussions we've been having the last couple of days, because we've listened to our families and staff of this issue of the changing of teacher for elementary kids. And in our community, that is a huge issue and something that's very distressing for all of us, not only for our little Wildcats and our little bit bigger Bulldogs, but also our Panthers. So we want to do everything we can to alleviate that as best we can, but it is a numbers game. And it gets more challenging as the kids get older. And I wish I could sit here and promise everyone that's going to listen to this video that you'll be able to keep your teacher. I can't do that. But we can minimize that impact to a great extent by putting on our thinking caps and maybe think a little bit differently. And we can do that because our numbers might allow us. Right before I started the board meeting, I believe we had three hundred and fifty-two responses to our survey already, without hearing a presentation. Forty-five percent of those families want their kids in person. Fifty-five percent prefer to stay remote. Based on previous surveys we've done in the community, that might kind of stick a little bit, unless they're hearing and people will listen to our presentations and it might change a peo-, you know, some people's mind one way or the other. But if our numbers stay around what we projected originally, between forty-five and fifty-five percent that would like to be in person, I true believe that we could develop a plan where more kids could keep their teachers across the grade levels. And I'm assuming that our teachers would love to keep their kids that they've worked so hard to build those relationships up with since August. I know I was a teacher back in the dark ages, because it's been twenty-seven years since I've been in the classroom. But I remember my seventh grade and eighth grade science students like it's yesterday. And I don't want to lose that connection if we can help it to the greatest extent possible. But I also believe that kids learn best in the building. We've proven that, we've proven that we can do it safely with our F D L A program. And we're committed to making sure this can happen for the families that want it. Just like the families that want to stay remote, we can run two programs very, very well. We have the most outstanding staff. I am confident that with their creativity and flexibility that we've always enjoyed, that we will be the envy of the South suburbs and probably beyond for our remote program and our in-person program. I know it, I've lived in this community, I hardly ever left these buildings for twenty-seven years. I know the quality of our staff and I know the quality of our parents will do everything they can to ensure their kids get the education they deserve. And we will fulfill our mission. This isn't just some of the kids, this is all children learn and all children be served. And we have nineteen hundred kids in our buildings in learning remote that we want to have back as many as that we, that want to come back. And we'll accommodate that, both of those programs. So I, I'm, I'm passionate to make sure that we can see this through and we can work together. We have demonstrated that over the years of working together through tough times. This is not something any of us wanted to go through this pandemic. And last February, when I was discussing plans with Dr. McAllister of things we would do this year during my last year in one fifty-three and his, he transitions, we had no concept that March thirteenth would come our way. And we would be zooming, which wasn't even my vocabulary then, discussing two plans for our families. We have come a long way together. And together, we will get through this journey. And we will come out better than we were before. So I'm hopeful that people will discuss these in a very civil way, the way Homewood always does things. And our kids will be better for it because we're their example. Mrs. Marx, would you like any comments to, to finish up?
Yeah, I just, I want to briefly tell you the plan that we discussed at great length today. We don't have slides for it because we literally spent much of the day talking about this as an option and it needs a great more deal, a great deal more discussion to fine tune it. But the thought was that each teacher at Willow and Churchill would keep their class. The teacher would, in the morning, have the students who are choosing to be in person. And in the afternoon, the teacher would be with the children who are remote. As you've heard, this isn't all about the numbers, if that can work out. There are also, the advantage is clearly that most students, based on the numbers, would be able to keep their teacher. The disadvantage is that the teacher would be unavailable to the students on the flip side of the day. And that we could not guarantee that people who live in the same house would be on the same schedule, because the schedules will be based on the teacher's schedule. Although if everyone in your house is going in the morning and we can keep everyone in the morning, then we could accommodate that. There are a lot of pieces to this plan that we need to go through. But I want you to know that it's a plan that we are going to really flush out and see if we can make it work for Willow and Churchill. As you know and you've heard, James Hart is completely different when it comes to scheduling. And our students there have six different teachers. I think it's highly unlikely that all six teachers would change. They will likely see some of the same faces during the day. Um, but it will be much harder to keep them on the same schedule with the same teachers at James Hart because of the way that schedule is run. But I want you to know, once again, that we have been listening and we are still working on a way to meet the needs of all of our students and as many of our families as possible. We hear your priorities and we are going to work towards meeting those. I want to open this up and see if any board members have any questions on any of what you heard so far tonight. No questions from the board? All right. And we are going to move on once again.
Actually, Shelley, Shelley?
Go ahead, Alex, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. He's with, uh, remote zoom in the car. Um, you know, I think, I, I don't really have any questions. I think it's, uh, you know, I think the important thing that, uh, that even stress, that has been stressed and just to kind of summarize my opinion and my thoughts is that, you know, we're, again, like Shelley has said and Dale said, we've heard what everyone has said and we're trying to, uh, to, uh, make adjustments to the plan, um, that was presented in, uh, on Friday to the community. And, you know, we're, that everyone, I think, is, I think, one safe, number one safety of students and staff is a, is a priority. Um, and then also, I think what's also, what we're trying to do, uh, as, as a district, is to come up with a solution that addresses the needs of all students, uh, all nineteen hundred students as, as best as we can. Um, we don't want to study everybody and the solution that provides, uh, a learning opportunity for everybody. Um, as we know, some students, uh, learn better or learn just, learn okay or fine remotely. Some students, you know, we talked about, you know, or learn better, uh, in person. And so trying to find the right mix to, uh, provide a learning opportunity is what we're trying to do, um, with our, with the plan that's been presented. So, uh, it's still, as Shelley and Dale and everyone has said, it's still, uh, something that is in the works and it is a plan and we're trying to be prepared and proactive. That we could potentially offer, uh, but again, you know, this is, we're not moving in this direction or, uh, as a district unless the metrics and the vouch, uh, and are at the point where they need to be, so we want.
Thank you, Alex. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we are going to move on with the rest of our agenda then, because we do have business tonight. Are there any responses to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
No.
All right, and any board members have any reports from any meetings that you've attended?
No.
All right.
But, uh, last week we had an F M P meeting, Finance and Property meeting, um, to discuss, uh, both the, uh, the initial tax levy, which is in the board packet, and then we also, uh, had some discussions, uh, regarding, uh, kicker to, uh, our services.
Okay. Anything else? I want to take just a second to thank the Homewood Arts Council for the very generous donation that they made to the Art Activity Fund. We really appreciate it. All right, super, and, oh, also want to mention, um, I know Dr. Mitchell mentioned it, but I want to make sure everybody knows there will be a special meeting of the board on December seventh. There will not be a board meeting on December fourteenth. There will not be a board meeting on December fourteenth. Special meeting of the board on December seventh. Okay, superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I'm going to rush before we lose any more of our guests, you know, after the presentation because I want to give a shout out to our Homewood Rotary, which I'm a proud member of. Um, each year we usually, you know, put together thousands of Thanksgiving dinners for families in the area. Of course, with the pandemic, we had to lower that number substantially, but we're still providing uh thirty Thanksgiving dinners for um families in one fifty-three, thirty of them. So tomorrow morning, we'll be picking those up at Suburban Access. I'm also Homewood Rotary supports the Glenwood School. Boys and girls over there, and I have the privilege of buying Christmas presents for those kids. Every year I'm excited to do that again um by house. So um if anybody would like to join me in that, feel free to contact me because this is a year that I think many of us feel like giving more than other years. I'd like to give more than receive, but this year feels especially good when you can give to others in need. And those Glenwood kids, our neighbors um need us and Homewood Rotary is always there for them. Uh, I also want to mention kind of a on the downside of something. The state assessments and I'm not sure if Mrs. Shaifline or anyone has had a conversation about this, but it's my understanding from a recent Illinois State Board of Education meeting that the state superintendent and the governor's office continues to push for our kids to take a state assessment this year. Even if you're remote, you'd have to have the kids come in and take a state assessment. Why would we want to take educational time when we're behind already to do a state assessment? I have no idea. I would suggest that we continue as a district to fight against a state assessment this year. I would ask the HEA members, board members and anyone else to write our state superintendent that state a state assessment given to our kids in this climate is not necessary. They, you know how we talk about how we, I think we've done a great job of being transparent and communicating with our parents and listening? I'm not sure if they're listening to the field. On what we're doing every day with kids and what is needed and a state assessment is not needed. So stay tuned about that. Kathy, I don't know if you've heard the same thing.
Yeah, as of right now, as you've said, the um the state is still saying that we need to do a spring um IAR test formerly known as PARK. However, they have not given us any dates for that test. As well as the Illinois Science Assessment, it says dates to be determined, but they have not canceled it in any way, shape or form. Um, in the past, part of the reason that those tests are required is that in order to get federal funding, um, we are mandated to do those exams to do a a state exam. Um, I don't know if that will change uh with any changes in, you know, the the federal government changes with our uh Secretary of Education changing. That may make a difference, but it still comes down to the state of Illinois. And as the state of Illinois has said, those tests need to be scheduled in the spring. It's going to be really difficult for us, um, even if we get kids back in person. Because as Dr. Mitchell said, that time is valuable learning time. And those are really long assessments that take a lot of classroom time to do the tests. The the results are not um given to us quickly so that they're very useful. We do, we have done a lot of assessment remotely. And it has not been easy remotely. Um, our own local assessments give us the best information to meet the needs of our kids. So those aren't really necessary. So as Dr. Mitchell said, I would reach out to your legislator um in Illinois because it's up to them to uh encourage them to eliminate state testing. Give us a waiver if possible, as we did last spring. We had the waiver. It isn't offered yet, but hopefully it will be.
Yeah, and I just want to mention at the Illinois State Board meeting the other day, they brought in three individuals from Washington DC. And again, it's it's our state superintendent and our governor pushing the state assessment, nothing at the federal level. This is our own state people saying we need to have a state assessment. And they did not give um any audience members any really any time to discuss it. We had a few superintendents on the call that expressed what I'm expressing, but they only given three minutes. So more to come on this, something to stay tuned about and and stay involved. And lastly, I just, you know, I want to ask if there's any administrators or principals or anyone else on the call that would like to make um any comments of highlights or anything happening here building, just jump in. I know we like to do that, Melissa. Thank you.
Pick me.
You are picked.
So first thing you um, somebody mentioned the Homewood Art Council. So Ethan Westerhoff, one of our second graders, won the mask design contest. So all of you who need extra masks, and let's face it, we all do, Lulu Bells and Upside Daisy has them for sale. So please help support the Homewood Arts Council and Ethan. Each of the other buildings had winners as well. Our materials pickup is continuing to go well. First and second grade picks up next week. It was awesome on Halloween that all the kids came in costume and we still got to see them. So we loved that. Um, mindfulness has been in place at Willow, I think, six years now. It's pretty much part of ingrained in what we do. But we still have sixteen staff members who are willing to give up four weeks, partially over their break to work with um mindful, I think it's mindfulschools.org. Their tenants are compassion, respect and equity, which works perfectly with what we strive to achieve at Willow and in the district. So I'm excited that we're going to have even more people with specific um learning and education to share with our students and with our staff to help us be even more fully ingrained in that. And last but not least, um Zach Coronado, he is our first year music teacher. He is putting together a music mashup. He has our first and second graders all playing the bells. He has staff and students talking about what they're thankful for in it. Uh, we're hoping for an appearance by the Wildcat also. Um, but look for that video coming out from well, hopefully right before the holidays. That's it.
Thank you, Melissa. Sarah?
Yes, we also had materials pickup and I just wanted to give a shout out. Thanks for everybody that was able to come through. It was a joy to see all of our students and families. Um, uh, most of you were able to come through and get those materials. We just finished up, speaking of assessment, we just finished up our STAR assessments. We're finishing them up this week and we're excited to share that information with families and use that to guide our instruction moving forward. And then um we have, of course, report cards and parent teacher conferences coming up. And um finally, I just wanted to mention, um, there's these really great conversations happening. We talk about like building on successes of remote learning. Our tech leaders um have been sharing ideas, particularly about how do we see student work or get a better picture of what students know are able to do remotely. And so using a lot of different tech apps and our Teams platform um to try to use those tech um tools to assess students better. Um, so there's some really great conversations going on. We're also engaging in the mindfulness piece too. We've got a team that's that's going to be jumping in on that. And finally, I just wanted to give a shout out as we suspended our FDLA program. We started in October fifth with twenty-six students onsite with a small crew of staff. And we closed with sixty-three students and roughly thirty-five staff working with um students who needed our support the most. And I just my, I I just wanted to recognize, you know, our office staff, our nurse, our assistants, all of our staff that um just were really dedicated and committed to giving their all to that programming. So just thank you to those folks.
All right, it was a magnificent Monday at James Hart School. Um, and as we start our second trimester, our teachers are finishing up um those grades. Report cards are going to be mailed out on Wednesday. Um, as everyone said, we concluded our FDLA program. Uh, we averaged about twenty-four to twenty-six students each day. And today I walked into the lunchroom and who knew I would actually miss lunch duty. I'm like, oh, my goodness. We don't have kids here. Our halls were quiet, so we will be so excited to get some kids back into our building. But just want to say a big, you know, thank you to our staff um for having an amazing program and all the work they did um each and every day. Uh, we are continuing with our social emotional um learning activities. So we have daily check-ins with students during advisory and then we're also doing our second step lessons um on Fridays. Um, our Fun Fridays activities um have included a spirit day. We've had a team day. And then last week's very popular was a pet parade. So students and staff um had pictures of their pets or favorite stuffed animals. So I think that was our most popular one to date. Um, we also are celebrating Student of the Month. So for the month of September, we had thirty-six students. And for the month of October, we had twenty-seven that have been recognized in the areas of um their core classes or eh or character and some students were even both. And then in addition to um the Student of the Month, we've um given um students rewards for random acts of kindness. We've had Fun Friday participant raffles. And then our new thing that we've been doing is on a daily basis. Um, Mrs. Hugo has been pulling up names of students who have perfect attendance. So and we are randomly pulling a sixth, seventh and eighth grade name and we're sending them a scoop of ice cream. Not sure about you, but usually when the weather gets colder, I think I want ice cream more. So uh I want to say congratulations to those students. Um, whose names get called and get that scoop of ice cream. And I just want to say to all of our James Hart Panthers, um, students and staff, keep up the great work.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to share, Kathy?
Yeah, I'd like to share um some highlights from our English Language Learner Program. Um, I failed to mention, we talked about assessments that one of the required assessments is access testing. And that one has been scheduled in February, so we've already ordered all of those materials and we are going to have to move forward with that. And I have to say, our English Language Learning Staff has been outstanding. We've had twenty to twenty-five of our English Language Learner students take part in the FDLA. So we were able to get them in um with our teachers to give them that support. We've had um our bilingual parent association meeting in October um to support the parents and help answer their questions. Um, we've allowed or our teachers have picked out um books and allow the students to pick out books for themselves to foster the love of reading. So we have a whole bunch of books ordered um through our grant funds for English Language Learners that should be arriving any day now. Um, so it that's going strong.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks. Anyone else have anything to share? Move on.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, we have several consent agenda items. The first is the personnel report. Dr. Mitchell?
Yeah, nothing that's in the board packet, nothing uh unusual on there, I don't think, to highlight.
Thank you. And we have to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for December twenty twenty. And we also need to approve the school report card as we do every year. Any questions on any of the consent agenda items? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of superintendent at the Board of Education, approve the consent agenda as presented in items ten A, ten B and ten C.
Second. Roll roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch? Mr. Bosch?
I think.
Uh, yes. I said yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. And we have several action agenda items. We have the second payment of October twenty twenty bills and the first payment of November twenty twenty bills. Are there any questions on the bills? Is there a motion to approve?
Go move. Check in.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bethay? Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the preliminary twenty twenty tax levy. Dr. Mitchell?
Yeah, they had their F and P meeting um as as Mr. Bosch had mentioned earlier, so I don't think there's is in the packet. I don't think there's much to add to that unless, you know, Alex or someone or Dr. Gibson would like to make any any comment. But I think it's pretty straightforward. We don't have to have a truth in taxation because it's under five percent. So pretty much a normal levy that we do every year.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Finance and Property Committee and the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education approved the preliminary twenty twenty tax levy as presented.
Check in.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the memo of understanding regarding teacher evaluations for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Dr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I'm going to mention both of them at one time so you can move on to the next one because they're both memos of understanding regarding evaluations. And it's just another collaborative effort with our um HE executive team and and schools and administrative council. So we're able to to get that agreement to make sure that you know, it's about growth this year, not evaluations of tenured teachers. I mean, they're they're doing everything amazingly well in remote. So we didn't want to burden them with that extra worry of evaluation. We're going to continue to focus on our supporting our non-tenured teachers, making sure they're growing. But we have great confidence in our tenured teachers. So uh we're kind of off cycle this year and we'll figure out the future later this spring.
Great, thank you. So we have two motions for this. Um, is there a motion for eleven C?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approved the memo of understanding regarding teacher evaluations for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have the approval of a memo of understanding regarding identified teachers' compensation level.
This is one of those civil linings in uh COVID, you know, because without COVID, this might not have been just by chance uh caught. To make an adjustment in the teacher's uh salary. Um, all the protocols were followed by HEA and and the district back when we um set the new uh salary schedules, but there was a little anomaly with one staff member and by chance it was found and brought to our attention and we worked with, again, a collaborative effort with HEA and making a uh slight adjustment in this teacher's salary going forward. So it's a win-win in in my view for this particular staff member in the district and the HEA. So I mentioned that.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education proved the memo memo of understanding regarding education support personnel for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
Did we do all, did we do all the motions? I just want to make sure.
No, I don't.
No, eleven E.
We did eleven E.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We've got eleven E. Eleven E.
Yeah, we need to do eleven E.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. Thank you for catching that, guys. Motion carries. Thank you for catching that, guys. We have employment.
No employment, yes, we have, uh, and Melissa, I don't know if you want to make a quick comment of process, but we, and why we're kind of doing the things we are doing for the secretarial staff at, at Willow. But we're, we're really excited to have Emily Agan and Megan Welsh join our team, um, very soon. So, um, Melissa, you want to talk a little bit about this employment?
Sure. So at the end of this year, Carla Hildreth, who has been our secretary for twenty years, is retiring. She's back to her house in Wisconsin, and I can barely talk about it without crying. So she's our twelve-month, one of our ten-month secretaries. Um, her family relocated and she was able to take a job closer to where her family relocated, which opened up our ten-month position. So I approached Dale and asked if I could hire the twelve-month secretary now so that that person would have the opportunity to train with Carla for a large chunk of time, which will benefit all of us across the board. We then talked about when to open up the ten-month secretary position, so that person would also get to spend some time in the office prior to the end of the year. We then had an assistant position that we needed to fill. So we hired Emily Agan, um, as our twelve-month secretary, and we've hired Megan Welsh as our ten-month secretary. However, she's going to fill in in an assistant capacity for us until she takes over as the ten-month secretary. Thank you for letting us do that.
It is a great plan. We like those transitions.
Yeah, we do.
Do well, especially with Carla and her years of experience, we can't, we can't replace that, so. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Emily Agan effective November sixteen, twenty twenty, and Megan Welsh effective April seven, twenty twenty, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than December eighteen, twenty twenty, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. Any discussion items? Look, I want to reiterate that we appreciate the opportunity to listen to the community. Um, and we appreciate that you take the opportunity to listen to us. We know that when we listen to each other, we come up with the best answers. So let's continue to listen and work towards the best solution so that we can be prepared when the opportunity presents itself for us to bring children back into the buildings. We've had much written communication to the board, as I mentioned earlier, that we have all read very carefully. Mr. Lawrence, is there any additional communication to the board?
No, there is not, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yo.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you all for joining us tonight, especially those of you who came on to our Zoom meeting. We really enjoyed having you here.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good travels, Alex.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe one.
Bye.